I'm gonna reconvene and call the meeting open. And first thing we'll do is pledge allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
With that, before you get going with open meeting, I think we have to have the door open.
Oh, yep. I'm sorry. I didn't see that.
We'll get it.
Yep, thank you. All right. Is that better? Okay, thank you, Andrew and Tracy. So now we're gonna go to our community engagement session, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Difler.
All right. On the screen you will see a draft, a repeat draft version of the 24-25 calendar. We typically approve the calendar in December or January of the preceding year. Uh, we're doing community engagement during this year, and this is the community engagement subject topic for this particular month. I'm just gonna walk through it month by month, and you could chime in at that point, or at the end, or not at all, however you see fit. Um, a couple of rules of the road. You can put school wherever you wanna put it, but you have to start school after September 1st, unless you have a exemption to start before that, like we do this present year. And you have to meet X number of instructional minutes. And 1,137 is that magic number to hit. So, without any further ado, in August of 2024, there is three days of in-service. We've had three days of in-service for quite some time here. Uh, that Monday of that week is typically new teacher in-service. The Friday of that week is an optional workday if folks wanna come in and get ready for the following Tuesday, which is the first day of school. Monday, the second, is Labor Day, so that one's out. So the third of September would be day one. The 23rd of September is an in-service day, so there's no school on that day. October 7th is conferences in the evening from 4:00 to 8:00, so we do have school that day. The 10th of October is an in-service in the morning, and a parent-teacher conference, 1 to 8 variety in the afternoon. And then the 11th is a no-school day. October is pretty clean the rest of that month. There are no other days of note. November 4th is an in-service day. The 27th, 28th, and 29th is Thanksgiving, sort of mirrors where we are right now in schedule. Christmas, there's been talk in years past about where Christmas falls, and do we need another day in this particular version of the calendar? If you're traveling, it's the Wednesday of the middle of the week. So, shouldn't be any issue getting where you need to get, even if you had to stay in school all the way through that Friday. You got four days to get there. So, that's Christmas break and New Year's. Come back for a short two-day week. Then you've got, January 20th is the turnaround time for high school specifically, from first semester into second semester. That means every teacher in the building has new kids come the first day of the second semester, so that's a big transition there. A big workload to get ready. In February, the 10th, looks just like back in October. It's conferences, but it's in the evening, so you have school. The 13th is in-service in the morning. Parent-teacher, 1 to 8 in the afternoon and the evening. And then Friday, well, it just happens to be Valentine's Day, so there's no school on Valentine's Day. I just noticed that. Worked with music and athletics, and I'm gonna double-check that to make sure the best spot for spring break is the 24th through the 28th. And I'll answer the question that some of you are thinking right now. Do we have to have a spring break? The answer is no. You can have a spring break, or not have a spring break, or have a part-spring break, or you could do whatever you want, but just so happens in this version of the calendar, there is. And that is not a magic time between winter sports and spring sports, but it's a time where it's the least conflict. I'll just say it that way. ACT, we don't know yet, but our hunch is it's the 4th and the 18th. The ACT regular day is March 4th, and then the makeup day is the 18th. So we don't wanna be gone when we have to give the ACT, is basically the point. In April, uh, Good Friday is the 18th, so that's the purpose of that one being circled. That one's by contract, and it is by, I believe, federal holiday, a day off. Then the 26th of May is Memorial Day, so that one again is an off day. And then we have June 5th is the last day of school. That gives you 173 days of student contact. And if you add that to the 8.5 teacher in-service and the three parent-teacher conferences, that gets you to 184.5 is what would be on the letter of appointment or contract for teachers and support staff. And that gives us enough instructional minutes. It actually gives us 1158 or 68. I just figured it out a couple of hours ago, but we're well past 1137. It gives us three days of, that, the 1158 is with three days of inclement weather taken off the top. So we actually could have more than three days if we wanted to, but we have three days of cushion for inclement weather, 'cause we likely will have inclement weather. That's where we live. So that's in broad brushstroke summary form, the 2024-25 proposed calendar. Questions or comments at this time?
Let's go to year-round school.
Well, I did kick the tires on that. I have a draft version of that. Uh, based on what I understand, in my reading and contact of DPI, in order to do that, you have to get an exemption to the September 1 waiver. And exemptions for year-round school for the September 1 waiver are not forthcoming. So, there would be the answer to your year-round school. Is it better educationally? Yes, it is, according to the research. The other big complication in year-round school is the idea of athletics. If you're in a period of time where you're in your 15 days or your three weeks of not being in school, and that falls in the middle of sexual basketball or something, that throws a wrench into things, too. So, yes.
Yeah, it would be statewide. That's your only way to do it.
It would have to be, or at least a conference or CISA-wide, in that to get everyone to agree on a particular day, let alone a calendar, is tantamount to, you know, conquering the world. It's just not likely gonna happen.
That's talked a lot in, like, principal, CISA regional meetings and things. Some schools are really for it, some are totally not. The problem would be is with the athletic skills, building that in would be really hard.
It would.
Unless everyone was sort of buying into the same concept.
Those who do it, I hear, love it. Rochester does year-round schools and I have connection there, and I love it. I would love it, but I'm just one person.
Yeah, like February, March off.
Well, what it is is for, it's, well, not quite that much. Maybe in your year-round version, you're taking six, but no, it's 40 days on. You'd basically start, uh, on this calendar, say pretending on this calendar, it would be July 8th would be the start of your 40 days on. And then when you get to 40 days of school, then it gets 15 days off. So basically, like, the week of September 9th, 16th, and 23rd would be off. And then you'd be back on on the 30th of September for 40 days, and then you're off for 15. It cycles 55 days, six rotations, and then you get back into July of the next year. So that's what it looks like. I think a lot of folks have an understanding of year-round school is 52 weeks a year, five days a week, which is not what it is. That would be pretty unsustainable. It does, I've mocked it up. It does give us about 20 extra days of instruction. The other factor that would matter, I can't speak for certified staff, and I can't speak for support staff, but if you're asking them to work 20 more days, I imagine it wouldn't be for the exact same wage. My guess is they would probably say, "Oh, by the way, just saying." So that would be a financial piece. And you're not getting additional state aid from the, you know, the state of Wisconsin. You're just paying more salary, and you've got the same number of dollars coming in.
It'd be interesting, from Rochester's viewpoint, being gone 15 days, how much warm-up they have to do again to bring them back to speed, or, you know, I mean...
I don't know. What I have heard, and this has predominantly been from elementary and intermediate, is the summer slide, and I'm not an elementary and intermediate administrator or a teacher, but there is a summer slide where June, July, and August, you're spending September and October getting them back up to speed. I remember a conversation I had with Pat Donoghue years ago, and she said, "We spend September and October getting them back where they were when they left in May", which probably is true in some cases.
I don't know if it's true in Rochester, but there are some districts that use that 15-day period to identify students that need intervention, more support, and then they hire staff, support staff, or certified staff to stay on, and then catch those students up that are behind it structurally during that break time. So...
I mean, I could imagine that would be problematic, too, as you look at, what is the funding formulas on, you know, the third Friday count set up on the traditional schedule?
You would also have to be cognizant of your big-ticket events, like you got the forward exam. You can't take three weeks off in April, 'cause if you're not doing those three weeks as school when you're doing the forward exam, you gotta stay in the window. So, you'd have to dance around those types of... When is your homecoming gonna be that? It matters. It matters. You have to dance around some big events. And to do that, you might go off your 40-15. It might become a little goofy. It might not look like 40-15. But this calendar proposal, again, is not a year-round school calendar. This is the traditional model that we've done for 100-plus years. Uh, it sort of looks the same as the one we got now, other than the earlier start time because of construction. Uh, it looks sort of like it did two years ago, and three years ago, and four years ago. So, I'm not sure if there's questions for me or comments that people have. It's engagement. If people have something to share, do so.
It's our calendar with DPI blessing.
Well, the only blessing they want you to, want to give you is instructional minutes. You gotta do that.
Yes.
And we, I did that calculator, and we are in, we are in the clear.
Fill it in.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, is there a reason we don't do a half-day the last day of school?
Uh, a half-day or, like, noon release, something like that? There isn't any particular reason. You can, based on instructional minutes. I know that half-days have been not well-received by certain segments of parents, because who are they going home to? Younger kids, clearly, they can't go home. I get nervous about deviating from the normal whole-day schedule, 'cause having worked with high school kids for all that time, they tend not to go home. And I just get nervous about, what are they up to? I know they might be up to something anyway. I don't know. But I get nervous about that. But there isn't any reason you can't. I mean, if that's a consideration that you want to make, you can do a half-day any day you want. We used to do a half-day release every month. We did that years ago for in-service purposes.
Well, even with inclement weather, boy, when you have to shut school down at noon or whatever, that, that's a struggle for a lot of people. There's, that notification goes out, and if you've got small children, it's...
And we've had years that with inclement weather, we've had years then that we ended up having to make up minutes, so then we actually had to add minutes onto the end of our days. So, um, we could get in that chance. If we were, like, taking a half-day off, then we would end up having to still add minutes then, 'cause we're taking those hours away. Um, and I think we did get into a situation here one year that we did have a half-day. And if I remember right, the, it was a bunch of high school kids that went down the streets and started having water, water fights. So, um, quite, quite a few years ago, and I think that's probably when some of that came to an end, is that we started doing long days, so...
But I think the question that Brenda is asking is the last day of school being a half-day? That is something that can be considered. You can put it, the last day of school could be theoretically any day of that week, based on instructional minutes. What certified staff are obligated to do is to work four hours at the end of the school year. And we haven't talked about it as an administrative team, but I imagine those four hours could be done on Thursday, or Friday, or probably even Monday. That's what we've done in the past. And, um, that's the four hours that's in the contract. But again, you're at the point right now where this is a draft. You can do anything you want. You could do a half-day and do four there, or four between 4:00 and 8:00.
I think some of the narrative has come that on the last day of school, there's some celebratory events that happen at each building, and so we have students that leave. Um, I think the slippery slope of that is, if it was a half-day, would they come for the morning? And, you know, what, what would that look like? So I think that's been a little bit of the narrative, if we have celebratory things. So, do a lot of kids stay for a full day? Not necessarily. Um, but, but really, I think some educators really like for their students to stay into the afternoon. Closure at our grade levels is extremely important to have closure to the year. I think there's a lot of value in it for students, as well as for our teachers.
That's what I was kind of thinking, is we do have a lot of kids leave.
We do.
You know, they get picked up after lunch, and then it's like, "Well, we were gonna do this thing together, and now half my students are gone", more so when I was teaching fifth grade, fourth and fifth grade. Not as much at the middle school, because we do our end-of-the-year rewards, so either they miss it all, or they're...
In high school, the seniors left a week prior, and they drive, and it's Mr. Gould, and the secretary is sitting in the office. That's not quite that bad, but a lot of people leave.
It's, it's the secretary's least favorite day of the year, because the phone never stops ringing for the last final mistake.
Yep. They're out, they're out, they're out. And they drive. So mom and dad aren't gonna, it's just picking them up. I mean, I get it. I was a high school kid once. I would like to go home, too. I get it.
So from the high school perspective, is there a lot of finals on that last day?
Half of them.
Half, okay.
'Cause you split your finals up, so they don't all have them on the same day.
See, personally, I would like to, this is, I'm gonna get arrows from the staff.
I know where you're going, Tom. I'm on the edge of my seat.
Personally, I would like to see a full-in-service day the day after. There's a lot of stuff to cover and to close out and to review with staff. And to say, "Well, some of you are gonna stay four hours at the end of the last day, and some come the next day, and some the next..." I would like, I would like to see a full day after that. But that's just me.
No one threw anything at you, so that's good.
Right till I get to school tomorrow.
Yeah.
They've already heard it. So you would, you would propose having an in-service day on Friday, the 6th of June in this calendar?
Whenever the last day would be, yeah.
Sounds exciting.
There's a lot.
I'm gonna stand behind Tom and just say
Oh, boy.
that we, we do try to catch up a lot in the summer, trying to get things marked off, really, to kind of wrap up the year. It makes it a little challenging when students are still here, and that four hours is flexible, and when people finish it. So, I'll stand close behind Tom, so he can get the arrows.
Yeah. Even if it came from a different day, you know, I would, I would trade that for, you know, somewhere else, but it's, that's just me.
Food for thought.
Did I hear that, that an in-service before the end of the year would help you? Is that what you just said?
For me, it's, no, no. I won't, we always have, we have three before the start. But I would say, I would like one the very last day. When the kids are gone, we have everyone there that last day to wrap up some certain specific things. And even if, I said, even if we took it from somewhere else in the middle of the year. But, um, I don't know. I, I typically, we've had one in late April, but we don't have yet.
Yeah. So does it have to be in concrete, the, the calendar?
Um, well...
Like, if you have three extra days, could we just leave three extra days early?
You could, if you wanted, but you could actually leave, on this calendar, we could be done with school on Thursday, the 29th of May, if you wanted. You could, well, there is six total days of flex. Actually, it would be three days less on this. You could actually be done on the 2nd of June. You have three days of cushion built in, uh, beyond the three inclement days. So that, actually, we're at 1158 with three days already built in. 1137 is the threshold, so that's 21 hours. You could pick up, you could pick up a total of, if you didn't have any days built in for inclement weather, you could pick up a total of five and a half days. So you could be done on the 29th or 30th of May, if you wanted. But that's rolling the dice on inclement weather. We're likely, 'cause we could do remote, I mean, we, we are. You could theoretically do that by instructional minutes, if, if you wanted to. We're gonna have some inclement weather. We can do remote, but I think what's best is to have kids here.
The problem is then the kids start shutting down on that date, and then we're cutting out weeks of instruction. And we're, our job is to teach the kids.
Correct. I, I, I believe that they're best when they're here, not when they're being remotely educated. But by technicality, by instructional minutes, yes, that is true, Joe. You could be done upwards of five days prior to the date that's on this calendar.
Would that change our graduation date on, or no?
Uh, what's the graduation date on here, Josh? Do you remember?
Later than I want.
Well, you can't have them done in March.
Yeah.
Some of them are done, like, they've checked out.
Just listening to you say that there's some, that there's some extra instructional minutes, and administrators saying that there's some more need for in-service, what if we considered parting off one student day and adding it in as an interim internship? Like, changing it to the 4th as the last day, and the 5th being in-service or something? Just throwing out different ideas.
Can. Being again, you're within your, their threshold of minutes, and this is a draft. You can do anything you want right now. It gets dicey when you change it after it's approved, 'cause parents start to live by this thing.
Yeah, I was just kind of trying to think of, like, the remote learning and with the technology that we have. I mean, in all reality, you could be in school if the teachers could teach, you know, remotely, for inclement weather.
And the harder part about that is we don't know what we're gonna have for inclement weather. You can rest assured there'd be something.
I mean, I could, the intermediate and elementary remote is quasi, at best.
Absolutely.
I mean...
You're giving them a canned educational item that you prepared and distributed back in October. So it isn't synchronous, there's no synchronicity with where you are. Whereas middle and high school are doing a lesson that's right where they left off the day before. It wouldn't be as effective for elementary and intermediate, I think is what I see you saying and hear you saying.
Yes.
Sean, is it still, um, is there still a difference in instructional minutes between middle school and high school versus elementary and intermediate?
Yes, it is. I believe it's 1124 or 2, or something like that, for elementary and intermediate. 1137 for middle and high school. So if middle and high school make it, elementary and intermediate school make it, just by definition. So we're well past that marker.
Even if we had a couple days that weren't as beefed up for lower levels?
'Cause we could get unlucky here, and it, we wouldn't be prepared for remote. Well, I guess we always will be now that we've distributed it in October, 'cause we had a day like five or six years ago where the water went out in town, and no one was ready for that one. We weren't, it wasn't, I don't even know what time of year it was, but it wasn't like snow time.
Yeah.
I don't remember exactly. So, that could happen, too. I mean, anything could happen, act of God, so to speak. Could happen.
Well, I thank you for the conversation.
But there's a calendar committee meeting in early December, and then you'll see this again at the board meeting in December. You could approve it then, or table it and approve it in January. It's either been December or January pretty much every year.
Okay.
There's one other board member that sits on that committee, you know?
We don't have a board member that sits on that committee. We've never had that. You certainly can have one. Tom, Jessica, and I, and Jessica's typically had some folks from certified staff that have joined us. That's sort of up to them. And all of the advisory committee, there's, what, 15, 20 people on there? They've seen the first run on this, and we have a meeting Wednesday after Thanksgiving break. So they'll chime in. It's on the agenda already for them to chime in with their feedback. So there's a voice there, if they want one.
Yep. Okay. Well, we'll move on, and we'll move to our consent agenda items.
I had, I had the board vouchers this month, and I had asked a motion to approve consent agenda.
Okay, motion is made. Second?
Second.
Steve beat you, Dale. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, no? There we go. Next, we'll go to our administrative committee. Josh reports.
All right. So, um, been a lot of fun here the last month. We had the FFA National Convention. Our kids went and did a great job, as always. Um, fabulous school musical that our kids put on, Annie, and hopefully a lot were able to watch that. Um, we had our annual Veterans Day program last Friday, one grade. Our breakfast, FCC LA crew put on another breakfast, where instead of doing it just in the classroom, we actually used the cafeteria and had a lot more people stay. Huge shout-out to Emily Larson and her crew for putting together just a fabulous breakfast. It was really awesome. Um, we had the high school and middle school band hall concert here last week. Super great job. Tom and I were on the edge of our seats for a whole time, over time. Um, and then this past Thursday, we did our practice ACT test assessment for 9th through 11th grade. Um, our 11th graders get instant feedback back, because we do the test in-house and have it, a simple scoring system. Kids are super excited, really, they went really well. We did a stage hypnotist in the afternoon. Not always fun and exciting for the kids, too. It was a good way to break a long day of testing. Future events, all of our winter sports are underway. Practices are underway.
The microphone, yeah. Thank you.
No problem. Um, we've got National Honor Society coming up next week on Monday. Um, FFA is doing Feed My Starving Children. We've got Honors Choir in Osceola, yearbook group photos, winter jazz band and choir concerts coming up, and then plenty of meetings that I won't bore you with.
Oh. So you're saying Tom's meetings are boring?
I didn't say that.
He doesn't like all my meetings on the list.
They're not boring. I've been there. It's pretty exciting.
That's right. That's 'cause I don't have boring meetings. Um, so we're starting off with a food drive. We have traditionally done that towards the end of November and into December. Exactly what that's gonna look like at the middle school may be adjusted, but we will be, um, doing that this coming month. Uh, middle school boys' basketball just kicked off, and they're up to a pretty good start. Uh, we just had games today and finished right before I got here. And they, the two games I was at, I had to leave before the second games were done, but they both won by double digits, so that was great. Uh, we have peer tutor training that we just completed. Uh, band and choir concerts, as, as, uh, Josh just told you about, was really fun. And I tell you what, again, hats off to our, our music instructors, Mrs. Rhodes Lundgren has the, and Mrs. Sunderland, just tremendous. They, they're just great, and they really, really did a nice job. Uh, we have some theater field trips. The 7th and 8th grade just got back from the Christmas carol at the Guthrie. And the 6th grade will be going to see The Grinch Stole Christmas coming up on December 8th. We're gonna, we are right in the middle of the Big Five Social Skills. For those of you that don't know what that is, they're actually lessons where we teach kids some of the things that should be the most easy to understand, but sometimes the hardest things that middle school kids have, such as accepting no without arguing. Um, you know, retaking redirection without, and those types of social skills are actually taught. And we're about halfway through those. We do one a week with the kids. And, uh, it's pretty important stuff. We have, our last day of trimester 1 and 2 is tomorrow, and so our students will be switching up some classes and may have different, different order or different teachers. And so when they come back from Thanksgiving break, there'll be some adjustments. Uh, we have some reading intervention groups. So, again, our students that are possibly looking to need some additional instruction in reading and in math, go into intervention groups each day for about half an hour. And we're gonna be meeting to look over the data in both of those areas during the month of November. Uh, Science is going to be presenting some curriculum ideas for their purchase coming up here next Wednesday. And then there's a whole bunch of really good committees that Josh doesn't have to come to, such as our technology committees and PBIS things. So, um, they're on there to, so you know they happen, but it's all good stuff, but that's about it.
I have a question for you, Tom.
Mm-hmm.
When you were talking about the Big Five Social Skills,
Yeah.
and you said you take a week, like, on each one, could you just share with us how that works in the building?
Sure.
Is it dedicated to our...
So, um, every, every kid has a, like, a 25-minute advisory time each day. And we do lots of different types of activities in there. But one of them is usually kind of a social skills lesson, where sometimes we're teaching about, um, you know, don't bully each other, and other times we might be teaching about, uh, having good character, or honesty, and different things. Uh, and so one, one time a week, well, so once during that week, they'll have a lesson on the Big Five Social Skills. So it's not every day. It's once that week.
Okay.
And so the lesson's about 25 minutes. And then, so they'll cover those five social skills over five weeks for a one 25-minute period.
And are those Big Five the same, maybe this is for Brad? Um, are those Big Five shared in district-wide through our buildings? By each, like, especially our lower grades? Is it the same emphasis? It just done in a different way?
We have a very similar program called Skill Streaming. It works on, you know, virtually the same, out of those five, Skill Streaming has, I wanna say, 50 skills or so. Um, so, yeah, it's really just taking the Big Five skills and then... So yeah, it's really just taking the Big Five skills and then broadcasting it across a whole different set of social skills. So yeah, we do, at both intermediate school and elementary school, implementing that curriculum at different points.
So the same Big Five is used consistently?
Yeah. And for us, the Big Five, you know, there's a sixth grade instructional units that we put together off of the Big Five. We cover the same skill that week. The teacher told you have to cover this skill that week. Seventh grade has a totally different set of curriculum, although they'll teach it in the eighth grade because middle school kids will call you up real quick. We saw this last year.
Yes, they will.
Yeah, they're, I don't know, what else have, I know it's accepting no and what is...
Following directions, accepting criticism.
Yeah.
Staying calm.
Staying calm, well, yeah, staying calm.
And, but they're, they're really twisted and these are specifically twisted. Obviously, instruction is more towards a middle school mindset. They're kind of based off of the things that, you know, if any of you have had a middle school kid, all of a sudden, they go from these little kids, all of a sudden they start questioning everything and that's not fair and well, how come then? And I'm like, come on guys, this is how it is. And so we cover those types of things during the five weeks. But we have a social skill like that lesson every week, it's just we hit the Big Five right now.
Okay. And I heard that Skill Streaming is pretty successful in the elementary, right? And you guys use it at the intermediate too, right?
We do. We use Skill Streaming. We build in some tier-two support. So if students have trends of having difficulty maybe in accepting criticism, we'll work in small groups with certain students just to rebuild those social skills.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a vast amount of different skills that are done within that Skill Streaming training.
Thanks.
Lots of exciting things at the intermediate school. We had some author visits. We collaborated with the Amory Public Library and as a district, we were able to host several very large mainstream authors. It was fantastic. Our students were very excited. And in addition, we were able to invite Clear Lake School District. It was wonderful to see Clear Lake students being able to attend something that took a lot of funds to get some very important people here. It was a really great event for our community and our learners of the Amory Public Library. The IPO hosted our Halloween carnival. It was a success. It was a lot of fun. It is a really big fundraiser for the intermediate school. Last year, a lot of the funds that were raised through events like this helped us purchase our climbing wall. And this year, I'm having conversations with the IPO about purchasing some playground equipment, including a buddy bench. And a buddy bench is something that a student can choose to go to if they don't feel like they have anyone to play with. And it signals to our students out on the playground, it's time to reach out and, and help this person have a friend and help them build that skill. We were invited to go preview the musical Annie. It was absolutely fantastic. Our students greatly enjoyed it. And like Mr. Benson said, a huge thank you to our music department. We are top-notch. We have K through five and also two special education teachers that are completing the top ten tools training. That is coming down the pike through state legislature of Act Twenty. It focuses on the science of reading and teaching literacy. We had, during our in-service, we had a coaching session with HMH. A coach flew to us from Texas and met with each of our grade levels independently to walk through some direct questions that our teams had regarding HMH. We are in year two of our EL implementation. The feedback from that was fantastic. She was a great coach. We really are experiencing a lot of success with HMH. And then finally, our school news team had a visit to WQOW last year. WQOW sent one of their off-site reporters to us and she walked through what that process looked like. And at that time, we engaged in a conversation asking her if we could come visit. They said yes. So Mrs. Brayton and Mr. Minarchek, along with twenty intermediate school students, went to their studio. I think the expectation was that they would get to walk around and see what it was, but they actually did a live broadcast with our students in the audience and Annie said you could have heard a pin drop. They were so nervous that someone was going to say something, but no one did. It was a great success. Our students were extremely excited. Their next endeavor, our news team, is they are going to be interviewing each teacher in the school. So they felt like they learned some really great tools. They're going to come back and interview staff and they are starting with me. So that's exciting. It was a great experience for our kids. So thank you to WQOW for letting us come and visit them for the day. We have a lot of great events tomorrow. Our entire school goes swimming. We do go in three different shifts. It's a fun way to celebrate our trimester. And just to highlight too, we have the Amory Community Holly Jolly Stroll on December second. We have our next IPO meeting is December fourth. And then finally, December third, we have a third grade concert that will be focused around the holidays.
So I have the same with the HMH. We had Teresa Stanley come in from CISA. She did some meetings within our grade level teams, which was also amazing in addition to that HMH coach that came out of Texas as well. So our teachers got a dip from CISA and from our HMH curriculum coach, both within a very close proximity. So that was really great. And I agree that those meetings turned out to be very resourceful for our teachers and very, very much appreciated. My TSS Trauma Sensitive Schools Committee is a brand-new committee. All of the people on that went through training through the online trauma sensitive schools training, which is Heather Forbes. And she does, she's an author and she does a lot of training. And so that was a really great training for one of our big three. And we have since created a committee that is going to go through the book Classroom One Eighty and then bring that information into the rest of the staff. So that's been great. They've started on that first set of information being in the language of trauma. So that's been a great, great offshoot of that Heather Forbes training. Elementary school hosted two authors in our building, Scott McGoon and Jennifer Nielsen. I know that there was some activity going on at the middle school, so their gym was, and their area was full, so she came over, Jennifer came over to our building as well, both supported by the Amory Public Library. And then Scott McGoon also presented during the school day for our kids and also to the Clear Lake School District as well. So that was a great partnership there. October thirty-first, we had our annual Halloween parade. That was great. The kids and the staff and the families all look forward to that every year. So that was a, a great connection we had. In-service, we had Mike McGoon here as a speaker along with our HMH curriculum, and he's just a real good PBIS guru, climate and culture. And he was, it was just a really nice time with him. Staff had a lot of time to laugh together, so that was really great. In the community, we had our Knights of Columbus Coats for Kids Drive on October twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. And they had enough gathered clothing with donations to clothe about three hundred kids. So that is an amazing feat there, very well appreciated. Again, a great connection between us and the community. And then our very own Lisa Benson, my, one of my school counselors, she helped plan a parent workshop along with Susa Penning from Polk County. And what they did was they presented on the power of showing up. So they had parents come in with their kids. We had some childcare provided at the same time so that parents could partake and then not worry about that childcare piece. And it's really about the power of showing up is just being there and being relevant in your kids' lives and how that can just change for them, how their day looks every day. And then Thursday, November sixteenth, was our annual LPO meeting. They are just very fired up and ready to go with our fundraising. They're working on a grant. They've submitted it. We're waiting for a response, but we're looking to match fifteen thousand dollars. So that would be thirty thousand dollars that they could use to help with the playground equipment after referendum to try and get some new things happening there or replace some of the things that didn't quite make it through the playground move. They're working on some other fundraisers within our, our building. So they're pretty, they're a group with many, many fantastic ideas. So it's really great to meet with them all the time. Some of our upcoming events that we have is November twenty-first, our PBIS school celebration as well, our annual Turkey Bingo along with our turkey dance. No School obviously coming up here for Thanksgiving break. Our Cherry Dale fundraiser just got changed today from December fourth to December fourteenth, but same time, three-thirty to five. Our Holiday Fun Night, five-thirty to seven, is something that our staff puts on for our families that just come in and have a great night, so we're looking forward to that. Our next LPO meeting is eight-thirty AM on December twenty-first. We do have a option for a virtual link in there as well. So if you can't make it in person, they can make it via Google Meet. So that's been a great way. We started that last meeting. We got some hits on that already, so we are glad about that. And then December twenty-fifth to the first, we have No School for our holiday break, so.
All right, just a few updates from Student Services. Maybe three or four years ago, we started talking about school-based mental health and counseling in the school district of Amory. And we had a lot of people kind of clamoring, saying, let's go, let's do this. We had a lot of talk with our, our team at the time and our school psychs and our counseling team. And we said, you know what, we're going to look at this and do this right. We're not going to just take the first thing that comes around and get the first provider in here. And I'm happy to report now this week, the high school began onsite counseling services through its mental health collaborative, partnering with Thrive Psychological and Counseling Services. They're an outfit out of Menominee. And a therapist is offering students who are referred through the Student Services team at the high school, counseling. Students nine through twelve may be referred. And we'll look at, you know, potential expansion in the future if things go well. We've also partnered with Amory Behavior Health and Interpeak Counseling for consulting and other mental health services. So this isn't just limited to one provider. And that's often in the very beginning what, you know, providers are just rushing in and saying, oh, let us be your answer, right? So I think wisely, what we've done is made an attempt to bridge multiple providers. It'll give us more flexibility in services in the future and also meet the needs of families by having more diverse set of, of agencies that serve different insurances, which a lot of that comes down in terms of the funding. So yeah, pretty exciting news to have that service happening at the high school. We have a couple forms updates in our IEP platform. I'll tell you, if you, you want to get some special education staff excited and generate some conversation, tell them you're going to change the forms. That's exactly what we did. So we changed our functional behavior assessment forms and behavior intervention plan template and also the determination of placement. It's one of the most important forms. It really tells parents what, what the services are in their child's IEP. If there's any kind of controversial decisions are made, that, that is the form that documents those services. So they're really important and we're happy to get a lot of the great input from our staff to be able to do that and thus far not have any major conflicts or disagreements around putting those into place. Also, we're able to send them out digitally because there's a new spot on the form where parents consent to send paperwork digitally through the, through their emails, so that's nice. We've got a Student Services Mini-Grant winner. It is the Autism Steam Roller. If you've not seen this thing, it is basically kind of like a pasta roller, a Play-Doh squisher. And a child can just send themselves right through this thing and get some deep pressure on their back and their front and the whole part of their body and you kind of come out like a wet noodle. So we do have, I think there's one, is there one in the elementary school? There's one in the elementary school right now, so if you want to rush out and go see that one sometime. I know you'll be tempted to put yourself through it. It's only for kids.
I was. I started, I was. I wanted to go in.
Yeah. I have the fire department with the jaws of life out here.
It's not like a Christmas tree wrapper though, is it?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
So we're excited about that. And finally, we've got upcoming training through CISA, supporting students with autism. That's an online training that we're kind of supplementing through physical attendance and we're going to be having staff watch that together, mainly parent educator staff watching that together. I think just, it's, it's better when people can have conversations and rather than just in isolation, watch a training at their home or at school. So we're excited offering that. So thanks so much.
Thank you, Brad.
Yep, we can.
It's okay with you guys.
What's that? Is it okay if we jump to Jorgensen Field?
Eric Elkin is here from the city. So I figured it would be helpful for him.
How long do you want to wait?
Say yes, please.
I know.
Would it make sense though to do the athletic facility upgrade and have, I mean, if he's willing to wait, maybe it would make sense?
Doesn't matter to me.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Would it make sense to do the referendum stuff first here?
Well, we don't really have any meeting.
No, we didn't. We're not able to meet this past Wednesday. We had some double booked folks and we really didn't have anything big to report because we simply moved on to second phase at the high school of remodeling of classrooms. And what you see at the elementary is literally what you see. There's nothing happening on the inside quite yet.
Yeah.
So those are the two big items that are going on. Further, with the time change, we sort of got to pitch black by five o'clock and I wouldn't have been able to see much. So Josh, did you want to say anything?
We're just coming up on, on transition phase here. We're looking at about December fifth, sixth, I think we'll have the next group of five or six classes making a switch. So that's, and then the front, the front restrooms outside the auditorium should be getting done about the same time. Yep.
Okay. Then we'll move to our athletic facility upgrade.
Okay. There are a couple of slides here that were prepared by LHB. Troy Miller is here with us to talk with us about that. We also have representatives from Crowe Sanderson, our construction outfit, to talk about what construction and budget and so forth would look like. This is an informational item. You're not taking any action this evening on the chosen design. That would be at a future date. So you've probably seen these already, if you could put that up there. Becky, the first rendering that you see is titled Option One. These are not in any particular order of preference. They are simply two options in any order. The highlights that you see on the screen, a very sizable change would be the football-soccer complex would be on the south side of Warrior Way. Between the, well, let me go to the west of the football complex. There are bleachers there. The plan is to reappoint the bleachers that is, that are presently at the football field to that location. And the press box, we're working on engineering because it's pretty top-heavy to be able to seek to do that. There is a parking lot there that you see, that rectangle that goes north-south behind the high school. That's an addition for parking. To the south of the track, those funny-looking shapes, those are simply a placeholder for field events. They don't necessarily run in that direction. They could, but that's for us to remember. We still have to do long jump, triple jump, high jump, pool ball, and those have to be accounted for. Then you'll see to the south of there, you'll see two baseball fields. The one that's in the corner, if you will, the one the cursor is on would be the varsity playing field. That is a turf surface just as the football soccer field is. And then the one to the west of that is a JV baseball field. It would be a grass field. So here's where you get two options. If you can go to the second option for me, please, Becky. If you do not do a jog in the road, because you move your cursor to where the, the road goes straight out from the intermediate school. So if you go straight past the intermediate school all the way down that road, if you go straight as an arrow until you get to the end where it becomes SMC's property and then turn and leave the ball fields where they're at, you'll see that the field that's to the farthest west clips the soccer field. And if it clips the soccer field, I, you got eighty percent of your field, but you can't have a baseball field in the middle of the soccer field, obviously. So on Option One, what we have done with Troy's help is, in essence, do a little, little arc down there. There is nothing there right now. It's literally empty school campus. And then you can drop your two baseball fields in there and not touch the soccer field. To me, there is no reason to do anything to a perfectly nice playing surface. We, we met, Jeff and I met this morning with Chris Boyd, the soccer coach. We want to do what is necessary, in our mind at least, to save that soccer field. It's a nice playing surface. That could be a nice practice field when their game field moves to the football field. The road that you see there, there are two schematics on this, I guess, two design choices. You could angle it to the left into, out to Minneapolis, or you could draw a straight line going straight up past Jorgensen Field and that soccer field out to Minneapolis. If you draw a line straight up and do that and put a road in there, that's our property. As soon as you go to the left, that is not our property. That's, that is SMC's property. Our property line begins basically immediately after the left field fence on that lower diamond. That's where our property line begins. So that would be something we would have to figure out. There is a additional parking lot up near the tennis court. That parking lot, I guess in theory, could go east-west or north-south because that land, if the Jorgensen Field acquisition, acquisition did go forward, you could park in either direction. But it's probably something to consider that we're going to need more parking if you But it's probably something to consider that we're gonna need more parking if you have Jorgensen having more activity and you've got baseball fields in that proximity. For the football field, there are other locations where you could park, whether it be behind the elementary, behind the high school, next to the middle school, or next to the intermediate school. We're looking at, not to switch gears so quickly, but we're looking at for that football complex to have an entrance, which would be to the north of the visiting team bleachers. So you literally, if you were a visiting team fan, you could park in the intermediate school, and you'd probably be into the stadium within, you know, a minute or two. The only walk that you would have to have is if you wanted to go on the other side for concessions or bathrooming, but you'd be in the game pretty fast. There's also some field events to the south of that, what I guess would be a service road at this point. That's the discus and shot, and you need some space for discus because kids are throwing out one hundred and fifty, sixty feet into the far left or the far right. So those are all of the items. Now, the items that are in the budget, that would be six million if you did the options we talked about, the five million dollar borrow, the million dollars in referendum contingency. If you went beyond that with some money from the district, I believe the district can afford the baseball-softball complex or the baseball-soccer complex, varsity baseball, JV baseball, and an upgrade at Jorgensen if, in fact, that acquisition did occur. All of that can occur. Everything to the north of Warrior Way, those ball fields there that are not presently there, the football field remains just as it is until the new complex is up and running. So if you ended up with a timeline issue, you could still play your ballgame. You'd still have that field sitting there until we're ready to go. That field could remain as a practice field. Those other fields that are located there, those would be add-ons in future years. You could do that in year two, year three, year four, however you see fit. The parking lot up by Minneapolis is not in year one. That could be year two, year three, year four. And the last item that really is add-on is lights. You would have lights at football, but you, in this six-million-dollar option, you don't have lights at baseball, and you don't have lights at softball. Though all of that has been budgeted out, priced out, and I believe I've drawn it out, and I don't think it's for the purposes of this evening unless you want me to go through it, there is an option to get all of, everything you see on the screen done over the course of four years, the biggest year being the first year with the borrow and the million from the referendum. That gets you six million of this work done. So that's my best shot at explanation on the facilities. I'm not sure if you have questions or comments, or you want Troy to speak to things, or Jeff to speak to things, or John or Gary to speak to things. I'm perfectly willing to answer questions. I might defer to those individuals anyway, but I'd be happy to take your feedback or your comments. I'll sit and listen.
Well, I want to thank Troy for working on this because we had a two-hour meeting that we kind of hammered back and forth and come up with these ideas, and I really like this concept, better than tearing up our old field and putting it back there. So thank you for doing that for us.
So it looks like on both these options here, right, we would need maybe just a smidgen of land from SMC.
The SMC property, and I think Steve, you were the one that tracked this down, is basically from that right, that left field fence immediately. Anything to what would be the south and east of that is SMC property. So that road runs right through that. Now, you could go straight and then draw a right angle and trace the outfield fence and maybe be in our property, but that's simply the way you'd have to draw it if you weren't using SMC land. That is their land.
Yeah. And we haven't had any conversation?
I have not. I know that that conversation is an obvious connection to this conversation that we're having here, if they're paying attention to what we're doing, but I have not.
Steve, did you have a chance?
I sent a contact for the plant manager to shine.
Yes, I did not reach out because I wanted to have this meeting first because maybe it's not even a conversation I'm gonna have. So I didn't do anything with that. The other item that we're gonna have to talk about, and that's part of the Jorgensen conversation, is the lot lines up in the top-left of the screen with the unisource. There's a little bit, it's a, there's a funny little jog there, but we'll work that out when we get to Jorgensen. Just know that's another conversation to have here in a few minutes.
Yep.
And this was really the advantage of moving that football complex over to the other side of the road and then doing it this way, moving those baseball fields to have that road, which would give us another access point off-campus.
Well, maybe this would be an opportunity for you to come up, Troy, and talk about the movement of that field on the other side of the road. We had a sidebar after our last meeting. If you could come up, Troy, and talk to us about that, that'd be great. The idea of leaving the football complex where it presently is located, you are really hamstrung by tree line, road, and road. Two of the three are sort of immovable objects. The tree line can certainly go, but just off the top of removing the tree line, disassembling the bleachers, disassembling the press box, demoing in essence the track and the football field, all of that, you haven't even gotten to square one. Just that, I believe, and I don't want to speak for Gary, and John, you're talking five hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars just to do all of that, to get that ready for a surface. Whereas if you go across the street, you're starting with a clean slate, if you will. You're not spending the five hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand just to get the square one. You're starting there, and that's where you're spending your money. There's simply more options if you moved it across the street.
But there are some costs.
There are, yes.
You know, because before, what we're doing is basically just doing the outfield. Now we're picking up baseball and moving it.
Yep.
You know, so you're moving two programs, so to speak. You know, this is something that we actually talked about at the very beginning with regard to the options and what is good, what's bad, what is looking forward futuristically. And so, you know, one of the things that, you know, came up as part of the conversation is just, you put this amenity here versus here, now you've got this turf field that's accessible to all the amenities inside the school, plus you have physical education, you've got all of those components that are now more immediate because if it's over here, you know, to get from the high school over to use that amenity, it's closer to the middle school. But, you know, what's the appropriate placement? What's it gonna get in terms of the most use? The fact that you're saving this so that you can continue to use this while this is being constructed, baseball's an issue regardless. But, you know, you look at the road, and, you know, one of the biggest challenges is if you come up here, you know, this is really a drainage swale, I think, if I'm correct, George. You know, so you're looking at a lot of soil issues and challenges where if we just cross it at one point, you know, then maybe we've got fewer money spent on all of those soil corrections and what we might have to do in terms of, you know.
It very likely is safer as well because there's not gonna be foot traffic out there.
Yeah.
There's foot traffic between soccer and softball.
Yeah, because there's another crossing point right here, too, right? So that eliminates that safety issue. So, you know, there's a variety of reasons why we look at one versus the other. Down here with the curve, you know, to save the soccer field, which is another big play surface, right, for you to use. If you shift all of this up, then what do you do with that small sliver of space that, you know, almost becomes unusable? You're not using any of this down here anyway, so it kind of made sense to drop it down and do the arc.
Another item that that road, and this again isn't year one, but that, the addition of that road is another exit point off of campus for parents picking up kids and potentially bus traffic. When I met with Ryan Pease last week, he came in with a sheet of paper in his hand. He was an excited guy about another option to get people out of the way. Because it isn't the buses, it's truly people just coming here to pick up their kids. They're in the way of the buses because they just gotta pick up their kids. If you're an intermediate school parent, you're out of the way soon thereafter pickup occurs, if, you know, if you want it to be, if you need it, it could be.
And the drive can happen, you know, with many of the options. It was just, when we started looking at it and saying, "Okay, if we start placing all of these amenities, we don't want to cause another headache that says, 'All right, now we've done all of this, what did we mess up in the future?'" And so that's why we showed, well, what are the ways to get in and out? What are the land challenges that might be out there for each of the different ideas? And then again, you know, it's that one more way to get off campus has nothing to do with athletics. It has more to do with safety and particular movement and things like that. Whether you do it now or down the road, we just wanted, like I said, to put all of it out there to make sure that everybody understood what are the challenges. Because if you go up this direction, now it also impacts, where do we place these things north and south? And, you know, not that it's a huge deal, but every, on a site as small as what you have, you want to make sure that you're using every square foot to its fullest potential.
A couple of other intricacies, and then I'll certainly stop talking because I've done too much already, I think, are the idea, is the idea of follow balls from that varsity field on the bottom there towards your field events. We had great length conversation with baseball, with track. We've had it actually in every group we've had today. We've met with four or five follow balls heading that direction. And the other is sightlines for sun. You don't want a pitcher or a batter looking into the sun, but we also don't want the third baseman, shortstop, and left fielder looking into the sun, taking their life into their own hands when you get a hot shot down to third base and they can't see. So in conversation with Matt Pedersen softball, he said it's not an issue for the batter and the pitcher where it's located right now. He said where it's, I found it to be a big issue was in my, I've umpired JV baseball games, standing behind home plate there looking out. He said you can't see there. So that's also a consideration in regards to how the field is placed. You gotta be cognizant of that.
Yep. Yeah, this is a pretty good arrangement. This one's more problematic, but...
I don't necessarily think it's the mistakes that we're gonna look at. I think it's what we can get for the money.
There's all of that, right? So, you know, you're...
People will look at both.
Yeah, you really do have to weigh both because you can't buy any more land. So, you know, and that was part of, I think...
Easy.
Well, you can't, right? You could buy a lot of land. But, you know, if you look at land cost versus, you know, versus the other amenities and how far you start to get away from each of your hubs, that becomes part of the thought process as well.
To Joe's point, what I said to each of the groups this morning with Jeff in attendance, think of where we're at right now. If you spend six million and no more ever, you're upgrading your football, soccer, baseball, baseball, softball, if an acquisition is made in the matter of one calendar year. That's a game changer for decades in this district if that occurs.
And traffic.
And, well, potentially traffic. Until we start seeing it, you won't know for certain, but it can't hurt.
It can't hurt because there was a lot of people that were very, that are very upset right now with the traffic, and they have been for years, and I think this will really help.
And when you look at, when you look at the green space, too, you know, this amenity is really truly mostly dealing with the high school. And so with it gone from here, now you've got green space that is in close proximity to the middle school, the elementary school. It's large enough that, you know, when you start thinking about things like, you know, junior soccer, all of that, you've got more fields than you did in any other option. And so, again, just pushing, what are the limits of the green space? You know, is really, is really what we're looking at. And, you know what, however you want to look at it, you know, you're picking, you were doing the stadium and the baseball field. That was six million. Now you're doing the stadium, the baseball field, and maybe a little bit more, and that's Gary's and John's bailiwick. But, you know, you're getting about the same amenities either way, but you're kind of preserving this complex to use in the short term, and you can, you can do whatever you want when monies are available to create this large green space that you currently don't have anywhere when you start looking at youth soccer programs or youth football or, you know, there's a, green spaces like this are at a premium.
Middle school football really doesn't have a decent place to practice right now that would serve that purpose. Our youth football, our tackle, our flag, our youth soccer, there's so many uses that we can use with that field the way it is, still leaving the track the way it is for a while longer. We can get kids out there, a lot, a bigger volume of kids, the public. That's been, you know, some discussion on social media of spaces for kids and families and people to go and be able to have outdoor activities available in a safe space. And I think this really checks all of those boxes for community members and for our district.
Even in the short term, you know, it's a luxury. You're only gonna maintain one, so then this one is done, it's done. You're not gonna stick any more money in it, but under your existing plan, you were gonna tear this track up and just do away with it altogether. But now, you know, it's like, just think of, just think of how quickly you can run a meet. You know, if you've got two tracks, you're doing all your sprints and stuff on one, you've got some distance going on in the other one. Like, you know, until that, until that amenity is just no longer usable, and then you just, you just do away with it.
Yeah. So can we, one is the money with me, right? Can we, can we still honor our promises that taxes aren't going up?
Absolutely. This, none of this is taxation. None of this is new tax dollar, not a bit of it. It's five million borrow, which is in the revenue limit, one million in contingent, referendum contingency money, and anything else you did would be money from the budget. This is not new tax dollar.
And on top of it, and again, to like some of the sports people in here for fields, without lights, I mean, I want to see that this is done correctly. The, like, I want to see it done right.
Well, there's lights at football. There's lights at football. In my, in my drawn-out, heck, I've referred to it, I might as well just talk about it, here's what I envision. So in year one, you're doing football, and year one meaning the summer of twenty-four, football and soccer complex, varsity and JV baseball, Jorgensen Field. That's year one. That's six, six and a half million dollars. In year two, you would remove the track. You're gonna cede the area where that track is, so you get that ground already on its way towards being usable because the track, if you remove it, it's just mud, that's not usable. Add lights at the baseball complex over the course of two budget years. The budget years being twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six. If you have lights there, that's twelve lights. That takes, that'll get you almost a million dollars to do that. If you did it over two budget years, it would be five hundred thousand in each. Then you would have lights for JV baseball. You'd have lights for varsity baseball. You'd have lights for football. In year three, you could add, you could change, you could update that existing field that they play on right now to make that a better practice field. And then you could do your road out of campus to upgrade the football field. If you wanted to do that right, it would probably cost you somewhere around three or four hundred thousand dollars. To add the road out of campus, that's about five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars. You would do that in the next budget year, the twenty-six, twenty-seven. And then the last piece, if you wanted to add other fields on the north side of Warrior Way, and you could add that parking lot up by Minneapolis, that would be in the budget year twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So you could do all of this work over the course of four summers.
If you were worried about traffic safety, the road going out towards other people's property, would a cul-de-sac work for, you know, turnaround?
Where do you think on there?
Just, just east of the ball field.
With a triangle already exists, would probably be, rather than take it all the way out here and build something new, there's really no one needing to go this direction. So, you know, just using this as a turnaround, which it pretty much functions as.
It is right now.
But the big thing is the traffic at this intersection, you know, in this area is...
Those cars you see lined up there, and Jessica knows this better than I, that's like two fifteen, two thirty. They're lined up forty-five minutes before the end of the school day. They loop, and the reason they do that is not because they want to get their intermediate school kid and head home, because they want to get to the elementary school or the middle school next. And if they're at the end of the line, they're not getting there by three-thirty, and they need to be there by three-thirty. So that's the reason they're lined up. If they were able to get out of campus, I think that might change things for many parents because I've charted it, if you will, years ago. It's not high school drivers that are in the way on campus after school. It's not buses. It's elementary parents that are heading towards the intermediate school or middle school parents heading towards the elementary school. It's the traffic down Warrior Way. And they're not doing anything wrong. They're just picking up their kids. But they only have one way to do it unless you go all the way around and then come in by the elementary off of Minneapolis.
So for the same cost that it would take to take out the track, I know he's our cost guy, what, for the same amount of money that it would cost to take out the track, could we put in the road for the same amount of money and then delayed putting, taking out the track? Or how does that, fund-wise, how does that work out?
Right, yeah, you could do, that's the, the good thing about this plan is that you can do the main, the main plan, you know, you do that for summer, and all these other ones can be added on, however you guys want to prioritize it, you know, the road or the field or, I mean, all these other things.
Based on John's numbers, a road would be slightly more expensive than the field, about two hundred thousand dollars more. The road's five, six hundred, the field, three, four hundred.
So when you are looking at like the budget, you know, like when you're talking your plan that you have it written out, do you think that we could still sneak the road in first instead of demoing the track? I mean, I just think that would be more important.
You can, you absolutely can. It's a matter of whatever you wanna prioritize. The only the thought process I had this afternoon was, do you want a road first or do you want lights at baseball first? And I put lights at baseball first.
Sure.
We've been dealing with the lack of a road for a hundred years or however long we've been here. We've made it happen so far.
Do we currently have lights at baseball?
We do not currently have lights at baseball.
Okay, so horse a piece, we've been currently dealing with that.
Yes, absolutely true, absolutely.
And is that a is that an issue? I mean, how big of an issue is that compared to traffic patterns on campus?
Well, I you know, I think it just opens up some avenues, especially if you're talking not just the high school team, but junior high baseball in the summer, you could have a six o'clock game, an eight o'clock game. I I think it gives you opportunities to get more people on the fields that you're putting money into. I guess is kind of how I look at it. You know, you got this great facility, but if if during the school day, we can't use it just, you know, games after four o'clock, I just think it opens up opportunities.
Also for weather too, you might shift the game a few hours for weather.
Absolutely. And in terms of the 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 track, the existing track, you know, while it's some has some lopsided and distant things going to it, I think community members would feel much more comfortable out there now if if we advertise it as an open walking track for people to use and I mean.
You don't have to do anything to the track, it can stay there till the end of time.
For distance running, it's 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 just fine. And the other the other thing.
In the football practice field, it can stay right there forever too, if you wanted.
Yeah.
It's what you do with the rest of the green space.
To to Joe's point, um, you know, I I think that when we if if you were to head down this path, you know, we would sit down and go through and do an evaluation that says, um, you know, here's what we would spend money on, one, two, three, four, right? So before I built the shot and discus area, I might actually say that the existing one's just fine, right? What's important is let's pull the conduit and wire for baseball lights now so that we're not trenching and we're not potentially hitting, you know, sprinkler lines and things like that that might be on the JV field or, you know, on the infield if the infield is is grass instead of turf or whatever it might be. But there's lots of things that it's like, oh, my gosh, now we're taking apart fencing or, you know, now we're spending more money to loop all the way around it. So you know, there's things like that that I think we would sit down with um, with Gary and John and say, all right, what makes financial sense to do right now so you're not undoing something in the future? And uh, and you know, it's kind of the same thing that we did at the high school when we went through the design process, right? It's like, okay, let's tackle science and get that done and then oh, let's throw in math next because those programs are so relatable. But on the other side of the school, we've kind of left everything the way it is. And uh, and it's because, well, do we wanna move the office? What's the next move? So let's not invest any money there until we make a decision on those other pieces. And so same thing would apply here in terms of going through it and saying, what what is logical? What what is an investment that means we're not redoing something in five, six, seven years? Um, and uh, and look at it from the perspective of, um, what makes sense so that, you know, every single dollar we're spending is being stretched to its fullest extent now, um, especially given the fact that you've got so much flexibility if you leave the existing facility there. You don't need another area for um, for the jumps, you know, and you know, we can we can do those in the future. So I don't know your thoughts, Gary and John, but.
I'll just add to that, I mean, you could might get a bid came for your buck and bid things out in alternates because what if bids come in really good, maybe we can get even more of the project. Because if it is gonna be a phased plan, then you could hire LHB to design it now, bid it out as alternate by as much as we can with a six million dollar budget and then tackle it as you move forward the next three or four months.
It's kind of like similar to what what we do with the referendum is we now are there's a million dollars left on with contingency that we're that we're gonna put towards this. We would bid out this main project, do stadium, the baseball fields, and then when that summer's over, you know, there's whatever contingency is left can get rolled into the next, maybe that's a whatever that next priority is, so.
I I think Sean really does have it written out for all the years.
Well, it could be in any particular or those are the items that I saw that were the add-ons.
Yeah, it's just you've got to figure it out so that in four years, everything's there.
Yes.
For the most part, right?
How you arrange it is up to you.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But those are all the add-ons.
I was just making sure to to address Joe's point, absolutely, you know, you you don't wanna spend dollars twice.
No, be lights, it could be a road, it could be parking lot, whatever you deem to be next.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah, I I think this is a great, two great options. I mean, I like the additional road to get, you know, help get cars off campus and the flexibility over a three, four year period that I think there's some great options, I think, available.
I thought it was a really productive meeting that we had last week and I, yeah, I would say the same that Keith said, thank you for being so willing to move things around for us and really have a great conversation and really brought us, I think, closer to where we wanna go now.
So you're scheduled for another session. You've seen a lot of Troy and a lot of Cross Anderson. I guess that's good.
Good thing we like them.
Yes. Um, in early December to view this again and solidify a final option, if you will. And then what I have tended to be planning for the December meeting is an approval of design. And the reason that that's essential is Troy's gotta finalize the design in order to ship it to Cross Anderson to get bids and get contracts. We can't go much past the first of the year on all of that.
Correct.
We won't get it started in April or May, we'll get started till August.
Right.
And that's shoot in the summer that we could have used. So that's our timeline, so to speak. So this isn't your last chance.
Was there any other thoughts on bathrooms or stuff that you considered there?
No, what um, what we had talked about doing is basically roughing in, um, and stubbing in plumbing so that bathrooms could be added as either a structure underneath the bleachers we had talked about. Um, you know, some of the things that we also discussed was, um, most of the districts that I'm working with now, um, food trucks, they just take a bid, bring in a food truck. Um, food trucks are actually cheaper than uh, than building something and uh, and it's easy just to roll off and say we're done with it versus a built structure like you have here. The moment it's obsolete, you're looking at all the code changes and everything that have to happen again. So in the short term, we talked about, well, let's just let's just budget to rough in plumbing, um, for where you'd wanna put bathrooms and those sorts of amenities. And then when you have money down the road, you could do you could do that, otherwise porta potties is what most most places use, so.
And we did talk about pos- the possibility of our own food truck within our organizations at school.
Absolutely.
Or maybe having a shared, um, like a booster truck so that everybody could man it, kind of like the the wagon that they do at Dick's Market so that everybody gets a chance, everybody's gonna have some, uh, so that nobody's losing concession money that helps with their programs, but maybe also gives them a little skin in the game if they're got some investment into that truck and.
Yep, so some districts will say, here's our calendar, here's how many dates that we would like a food food truck onsite. It might not be just at this location, it could be at baseball, it could be here, it could be there, but give us a bid and tell us, you know, what what you think you would you would offer us to to have your your service here. And you know, you're they're mobile, so you know, it's uh, you know, it's all the way down, all the way down, you know, south of Prescott, right, is Chef's Shack and they're going hours away to do their taco truck, so.
And if it's, you know, something that the school owns or our boosters own, there's so many opportunities there to sell concessions that maybe not having that one permanent structure isn't going to accommodate.
Right, and that's not reinventing wheel, there are other districts that already do that.
Right.
Yeah, you could even have two, so you'd have a choice, right? Pizza in one and tacos in the other.
Fair time, like right there.
Exactly, exactly.
As I I did have a conversation uh, with the FFA and FA FFA alumni, um, they're kind of excited about buying a concession trailer because not only can they do football, but.
You can do the quorum across the street and everything else.
Like when they had their Halloween ride and everything like that, they'd have a trailer out there.
Right.
So they're they're kind of like, okay, this could work for us.
Yep, we just need the electrical hookup and all of those things out there and and so, yeah.
So, yeah, I think when we kind of talked about this, the vision was that the district would kind of embrace that opportunity and foster that so that nobody was losing out, we weren't taking anything away from anybody.
Right.
It would be there.
And you could focus, you know, the boosters could focus on other things besides, you know, it's like everyone's gotta sign up for concessions. It's like, oh, my gosh, you know, where now they can focus on tailgating and all those other things that kind of boost school spirit rather than drag it down a little bit.
Right.
Troy, are we thinking as an option for restrooms to utilize the high school given the proximity or?
You you definitely could, um, you know, use it, but you know, that would be up to you. You you know, we could just put a slab in and just line up the porta potties for now and and get that to work, so.
Yeah, and when we talked about that, you know, we did kind of talk about, it's not like these are a lot of all day events that we host here that would have to have the permanent bathrooms, you're talking football game, three hours. I mean, the track is probably, if we have a big track meet here, that's probably the time that you're gonna have the most people here the longest for a longer day, but other than, I mean, for respect, the amount of money that is apparently required for these bathrooms is absurd.
Yeah, it it is absurd. And and you know, i- if you have it over here, you know, if if this becomes your central bathroom facility, right, now you're serving baseball, you're getting a little ways away from soccer, but you know, you've got a lot of stuff that you can now serve with toilets besides just the football and track, um, stadium for for such an amenity without opening up the building. So things to consider.
Yeah, the option too is if they go to a food trailer or whatever, the current concession stand could be adding bathrooms in there.
Mm-hmm.
It would be a little bit further away, you know, and you'd have to cross the road, but to save money and to really get the best bang for our buck, we didn't wanna spend all that money on bathrooms.
Yep.
Well, I would vote the same way.
Yeah.
Go before you come to the game.
That's right. I would also tell parents to start sending their kids home on the bus rather than coming and picking them all up.
No beverage.
I don't ever remember my parents coming to get me.
Same.
Yeah, no beverages offered at concessions, right?
Food only.
Food only.
Okay. I think that.
Not an action item?
Nope. Thank you for coming.
So the only other thing I got is for you, so if you reach out to SMC to find out what their interest is, if there's an interest.
If that's what you want me to do, I certainly will.
Then then the question I would have for them or for for us here is, what what does that conversation entail? Is it just a cutoff like it showed in the picture or is it the hole from the end of their building?
I think we need to sit down and look at the GIS and figure out where they are and where we are and have that conversation. I don't know what they are.
A road easement.
Or uh, not doing with the land, is it an easement? I don't know what their interest is.
Yep.
But I'll I'll if that's what you want me to do, I'd be happy to contact them.
I think it's important conversation to.
I will contact them and see what they have to say.
They have some time to ask them, right?
Yes.
Then the other question would be with, you know, just is it a public street or is it a private road? Because those things are different as well, so.
Yes.
Um, make sure we need to connect all the dots.
That is interesting because you're you potentially are connecting with the public road, right?
Right.
Um, so I Steve, myself and Keith were all at the meeting last week that kind of came up with this rough plan and so Dale and Joe didn't have a chance to weigh in, but if we're kind of looking at approving next month, I mean, I don't wanna have the same plan brought forward or next month and so without having, all of a sudden we get to next month and go, oh, we'd like to see something different and then we're running out of time, so is there anything that, because we all weighed in, so.
Yeah, no, I like I like both options. Um, I would love to see a little uh, little road addition there through the corner of SMC and um, either one of these options, I you know, I probably personally like maybe number one better, but I think I could certainly live with either one, so.
Not not to get the cart in front of the horse, but you know, with with the Jorgensen property, you know, that road could go up and then curve back out and come out on Sundance because those softball fields would be shortened up a little bit for our girls.
Yeah, they would.
And we would have the property there.
You'd have some feet there.
Yeah, we can't talk about can't talk about that with the menu, right?
Yeah, be a left turn.
But but it is it also potentially an option to not do a road?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
It's an add-on.
You get to talk to all the drivers while you're turning it off.
We're gonna send you out there with the sign, Josh.
And I and I will suggest I take the bus.
Yeah. I don't get that luxury sitting in the seat.
Yeah, I you know, it's, you know, I thi- I think it's been a good process to make sure that you feel comfortable with um, with the overarching vision and where you see it going, step one, step two, step three, step four, even if it takes, you know, six years instead of four years, you know, you there's bite sized chunks there that you can continue to to look at as dollars are made available. And you know, it makes use of existing amenities for as long as you would like, um, before you take the next big step. And uh, and so, you know, and back to the point of having an amenity close by where it gets used more and more and more if you're spending that much, um, how do you how do you increase usage? Um, which was one thing that, you know, Keith brought up and spent a good good amount of time talking about, so.
The meeting that we have in early December is a a public meeting and will be posted open session, so your conversation will be available to everyone to hear.
Yeah, and we really are, you know, getting up to the point where we gotta we gotta start playing the trigger here or.
Yep, and then the December board meeting is like less than a week after that.
Yep.
So that'd be the timeline.
Fantastic.
All right, good. Thank you, Troy.
Thank you, Troy.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Gary.
Did you wanna move up uh, in the action items?
Well, the resolution, I can't imagine it's gonna take hours. John's gonna handle that one.
No, I and Becky, I'll put it up on the screen here. This is just the official resolution authorizing the borrowing that we had discussed at last month's meeting and you guys took action on. Um, so I'll won't bore you with leading reading the legal jargon. Um, again, I just wanna to point out, this is not locking us into interest rates, this is not locking us into anything other than it's authorizing us to continue to go down that process. Um, the follow-up to this is within ten days, it'll be posted in the Amory Free Press, uh, and then that process, that thirty day petition process will start at that point. Um, so this just needs to be voted on to adopt the resolution. Um, and that said, unless you have any questions regarding it, nothing's changed from from last month.
I don't know that there's any more discussion on that. Do we have a motion?
I would make a motion, we approve the resolution authorizing the borrowing of up to five million dollars.
Okay. And second?
Well, second.
Joe? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? There we go, here we are.
Okay.
Now we get to talk.
All right.
About Jorgensen Field.
Okay.
Did you wanna come up and talk?
I actually would.
Perfect. Please do.
This is Eric Elkin. He is a member of the city council, is the president of the city council, uh, here to represent the interests of the city, if you will. The Jorgensen Field conversation is uh, three, four months in the making. Uh, we've had some conversations uh, here, they've had conversations there, so now we're in the same room. Real quick, I'd like to make you aware of the lot line situation by map that I talked about. The city's seen this as well. If you'll notice, I know this is faint.
Truly faint.
Halfway down the page on on the screen on the left, you'll see a yellow line that's sort of diagonals and then connects up with Minneapolis Avenue. That's to the nor- to the up on that, to the north on that screen is Jorgensen Field That's to the north, to the up on that, to the north on that screen is Jorgensen Field property. Into the south of that line is Unisource property. None of that is School District of Amory property. That property begins at the yellow line at the top of the screen. So that's the goofy lot line that I made reference to there. So if any acquisition was made, we would need to consider whether we want to square that up or leave it as is. Unisource didn't even know that it existed until a couple of weeks ago, so.
Nobody knew it existed.
No one knew it existed.
Yeah, you don't go looking for trouble if you don't have any, right?
No.
I talked to Rick Donovan, who's the plant manager over at Unisource, and he said they found that property line when they ran power in from Excel. And he says, we have nothing but a desire to square it off.
Right, and that is among the several things that we would need to sort out. But before anything, when this first came to the plan commission, it was a potentially sensitive situation, only because the Jorgensen family and the memorial and the reason that the fields exist. And I would like to commend Sean on the sensitivity and the legwork that went into that to get Eric Wojcik representing the memorial and Connie Jorgensen there to talk about it and make sure that it was okay to proceed. You know, that was not going to happen without that, so.
That was my first phone call.
So thank you for that, because that's a tough place to start, especially for those of us who were there for the reason that it existed. So now to the property. We went back through with our, with engineer SEH and with city attorney and looked at the property. We went back to 2002 when that road was put in. And the best anybody can figure is, well, we didn't want to make it crooked. It's, it would be easier to go straight. There was some notation that they would say that they would go back and do a certified survey and straighten it out, which never happened. And as Steve said, anybody involved wants to make this straight. So before any kind of a property transfer or any offer can be made, the city would sort that out and make sure that there's a certified survey that makes that straight. Because it would also probably identify the easement for services would run alongside of the highway or that street as well. And there seemed like there was another note, there was a gap between the city property.
The gap, but you see the double yellow line at the top of the screen is merely a map anomaly?
Yeah.
I had that confirmed with Ed Flannam. He said it is district property to the north of the line and Jorgensen Field to the south of the line. It's not, no man's land in there.
That's what we figured out too, is it anomaly, so not an issue. Any other questions that could come up? The valuation that was presented is, was just the value of the property, but it includes all the fixtures. It includes all of the, you know, the water sewer, the electrical that's been running there, the buildings that are there, the fences, everything else. It's, there's no reason to separate any of those things out, so, any questions?
And that valuation was said to be $96,000, to my recollection?
Yep.
Go ahead, Tom.
So my understanding, my understanding there, and maybe we don't want to talk about it over here, but there's a new industry coming in, and that's just the east of Unisource?
Yes.
So what, can you show on here?
It would be, well, they would be down in this.
Those three acres right there?
Yeah, this corner here, yeah.
Do you know what their plans are like as far as road access? They're trying to get enough of that?
Well, they'll, whatever needs to be extended to get to their property would come off from Sundance.
Okay.
So, straight through.
So that wouldn't affect any of the plans that we're just?
No, the rest of the right-of-way is still through there anyway, so. Mostly it's squaring off that odd piece.
Am I correct to assume then the asking price for the land and the features on it is $96,000?
That's what it is right now, yes.
All right.
And where did the property valuation come from for that figure?
We had that one done by a certified realtor broker.
So a realtor did that?
Yeah.
So, go ahead. You just burst my bubble tonight. Obviously, we have a really significant partnership with our community, with the city and the school district. And we are investing, you know, again, $43.5 million along with all this sports complex to really assist not just the school district, but the city of Amory. And I just, I wouldn't have expected $96,000.
That's an offer, can always counter. I mean, there's, that's the valuation. And we didn't do anything besides, you know, there's, there have been improvements to the property that have, the city has some investments there that they've, and maintained. So there is some cost into it already, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that there is, there are some things there, right? And I know that the memorial built a lot of the facilities there, that's my understanding. But it doesn't change the fact that they're on city-owned property, so they are owned by the city, correct?
Correct.
Another concern for me is the jog out into Left Field. You can see the jog below that from SMC's line coming up. That was donated by SMC to.
To finish that off, yeah.
Finish that off to get a 300-foot fence. So, and I don't know how much acreage that is, it's not a lot.
No.
But I think that, to Eric's point, a counter would be something.
This space is 6.1, so you could probably guesstimate what the acreage of that piece is. The whole thing is 6.1.
You know, some of this with the $96,000 is good faith of the school district working with the city. I mean, obviously, if we come out with a road to Sundance or whatever, you know, there may be some cooperation there, I'd hope that would help facilitate this whole thing. And so with that, it's like, for us to build what's there would cost us much more.
Oh, yes.
And the nice thing is, it's right there next to our property.
The other thing that's important to me, and I can't overstate it, it's this complex came about because of a tragedy. And a lot of people, businesses, churches came together to build that. And it was a, it was a healing thing, very much so. Go back, that's the same fund. And that would definitely be where that money could be used is not just, you know, not just North Park, but other places that we have needs as well. Because there's, you know, picnic tables need to be upgraded around the community for the other events. And there's places that we just don't have the time and the resources to deal with that, yes, this would change some of that. Absolutely.
So this is an action item?
Yep.
You can do it to will at this point in time?
I'll make a motion, repurchase that land for $96,000.
I would second it.
Made in seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No. Aye, or whatever I gotta say.
Okay. Well, motion passed. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate you all.
I'll be in contact with you and Patty and the others on that list tomorrow. If not tomorrow, Monday after. How about thanks, after Thanksgiving, Monday.
All right.
We'll let you have tomorrow off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, short-term borrowing.
I'll take over on this one again. So this is, it's been a fun month, November has, in the business office. We talked at the October board meeting, you authorized us to do our traditional short-term borrow. However, Bremmer Bank had an error on their side, so closing was refused by them and updated, which unfortunately kicks off us having to do this whole thing all over again. So what is up on the screen right now is the same exact resolution that you had in October. However, the interest rate was adjusted. I will say that it was a five-point increase, meaning that we are over the 8% mark for now for the interest on the line of credit, which is the fair market valuation for a line of credit. So we are, they're not charging us more than the next person, it's just the price of doing business in 2023. So the way that this kind of works out, November, early December, August, July and August are the months where we typically see a line of credit advance and therefore pay interest when we withdraw that money or take that advance. November's out of the question now because we weren't able to get it done. So I've just been eating my nails to the nail bed instead of actually borrowing money. So the reality is that our interest is not going to really see any bit of an increase for this fiscal year. But what I will say is this does make next year's short-term borrow conversation a little bit more about going outside of what we've typically done and looking at some alternative options for a short-term borrow. So again, this is just for the exact same amount. It's a line of credit through Bremmer Bank for up to $2 million. It is a revolving line of credit, so it is withdrawn and paid back for the duration of a year. And it's the same stipulation that we cannot take any disbursements, or we have to take a disbursement if there is going to be one by June 30th, and we can't take any additional disbursements post-November 1st.
Okay. We first rescind our motion from last meeting. So I need a motion to rescind that motion to approve this borrowing at that time, it was incorrect.
Yeah, and just a question, so the interest rate here is 8.5%, and I think, was it 3.5% last?
It was 3.25% the last time, yep. So it's a.
That seemed awful generous, you know?
It did, and.
I wasn't sure if they.
Yeah, the, our banker that we've had for, I mean, a long time retired. So this was just a simple oversight for the new banker here in Amory.
Well, and the 8.5% would seem certainly, in today's economy, very in line with a line of credit interest rate, so.
Yep.
So Keith, if you're, if we need to rescind last month's?
Yes.
I guess I would make a motion to rescind last month's short-term borrowing approval and approve the new.
Do it altogether.
Well, okay, maybe second that.
Second, Joe, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody no? Nope. Okay, so now you can go, Dale.
Now I would make a motion to approve the short-term borrowing as presented.
Okay, and a second?
I'll second.
Joe, again, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? There we go. All right.
Thank you.
Quit biting your nails.
Just to save you, John, that's all we did in part.
Waspa delegate.
Okay, we had a Waspa delegate as needed. Erin Osro served in that capacity for.
Erin Hosking.
What was that? Hosking, sorry, not Erin Osro. She'd be very surprised at that.
She would be very surprised.
Yeah.
Erin Hosking for five, six years. We're looking at a new Waspa delegate, and that's something for you to decide and take action on.
Not it.
Me either, cows need me. I'm sorry, I would love to, but I just, the cows gotta have me.
Have the members to things? I can do that.
Okay.
All right, yes, thank you.
Steve Osro, not Erin Osro.
See, that was a Freudian slip. Sean, are you?
I was thinking.
We're gonna volage.
So I need a motion?
I'll make a motion to nominate Steve Osro.
All right.
Second.
Char, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Steve.
Yep. And if you can't go.
Let us know.
Dale will go.
Yeah. All Keith.
Yeah. All right, next, the best part, donations.
Okay, donations to the district, Cardinal Glass Industries. Thank you for the donation of replacement safety glass for one of our classrooms. Balsam Lutheran Church, thank you for donation of 40 boxes of facial tissue to the elementary school. Balsam and Elum Lutheran Churches, thank you for the handmade, handwritten notes that you sent for every district staff member, and I mean every single person. Ruby's Pantry, thank you for the generous donation of $6,000 to the School District of Amory to help fight food insecurity within the district and our community. And that's the last of our donations.
Do you got a little quip about that $6,000, how it would be used?
I can speak to that. So the way that we are doing this awesome donation, which I would like to point out, is the second multi-thousand dollar donation from Ruby's Pantry in the last three years. So it's just been outstanding. So this is going, this was done a little bit different this time. Instead of blanket just paying off lunch debt, we simply put it to the community and to the parents in the district and said, let us know if you have kids in the district who need help, no questions asked. And as of this morning, we have 153 kiddos that, whose names we have. So that money will be equally dispersed between all of them, whether they're positive, negative, or otherwise. So it's been outstanding.
Perfect, perfect, thank you so much. Motion to accept our donations? Steve, second?
I'll second it.
Joe, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, now we'll move to our personnel action items.
We have new employee and extracurricular contracts for Darcy Lorsong as a seventh-grade math teacher, long-term substitute. Alicia Raska, Clubhouse Assistant Teacher, reassignment of Antonio Berger from regular education para to special education para. Nina Hutton from Director of Clubhouse Childcare to special education teacher. Resignations from Kelsey Bauer, special education para. Bill Peterson for Girls Golf Head Coach, and Greg Wallen as a special education para.
Motion to accept our personnel?
I'll make a motion.
Steve, second?
Second.
Char, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Nope, there we go. Now, do we have anyone sign up for community comments? Jeff, you want to check that board?
Good job, Jeff.
We have none? Do we have any opposed session?
Yes, we do.
Yep, okay, so considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility in order to take personal action pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85 sub-1 sub-C.
So moved.
Char, second?
Second.
Dale, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we're closed, thank you much, people.